I've got six o'clock, so we'll call the December 4th meeting of the Eastlong Metal Planning Board to order. We have Ty Richards, George Kingston, Stenver, Romar Vito, and John Toshner. The first thing I need to announce is that we are recording this meeting for LCAT and also for the minutes, and I'd ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. Hearing none, we can proceed. We have minutes from October 30th. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes from October 30th?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Any corrections? I read through them, they look good.
You need a second, you can't second your motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. You can't second your own motion, sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good. I abstain, I was not at the meeting.
Okay. Four yeses and one abstention. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move number six and number eight out of order.
Did you approve November 20th or just approved the 30th?
Oh, yes. Let's approve those minutes. I'm going to rescind that. I'll make a motion to approve the November 20th minutes.
I haven't seen the November 20th.
You haven't seen them?
No.
They were emailed to you.
When?
Yesterday.
Yeah, they were emailed to us, they're not in this folder though. But they were, I did see them yesterday.
Okay.
I have to abstain because I wasn't here anyway, but...
Well, if people have seen them and reviewed them, then okay, I'll take a motion for that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those...
I'm sorry, further...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
One abstain.
I abstain.
Okay.
So... I'd like to make a motion to move number six and number eight out of order to the front.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
First off, I'll come. Well, they're here and it's not very controversial, so...
Yeah.
Rather than tie them up for...
So they have to sit through all the controversial stuff?
Yeah. Okay.
We can figure something out.
All those in favor of moving it?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So I would like to accuse myself because I'm on the board of directors of Brownstone.
Okay.
Not acting as...
Yes.
So you probably have an opinion?
Okay, so first item on the agenda is the public hearing for Brownstone Gardens for a site plan. Just, all you need to do is read number six.
Okay, I was looking for it there, but I can do it here on the agenda. Okay, great. The Eastlong Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the school committee conference room, back entrance of Northern Street. You have Eastlong Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, Eastlong Metal, Mass. Request by applicant for site plan review at 75 Pleasant Street, Assessor's Parcel 38-64-A2, a 18.87 plus or minus acre site in 79 Pleasant Street, Assessor's Parcel 38-64-B, 5.01 plus or minus acre site, and elderly residential ER zoning district. Applicant Christopher Carr, Brownstone Gardens, Inc., 75 Pleasant Street, Eastlong Metal, Mass.
So, come up and tell us what you're going to do.
Okay. We're trying to become relevant, huh? Good evening, my name is Christopher Carr, and I'm here representing Brownstone Gardens. And I've been on the planning board for Brownstone Gardens for 40-plus years. But here tonight, we're in for kind of a limited review. There's no new units being built or no big additions, but what we're trying to do is bring it into the 21st century. With me tonight is Ray Miller, I'm sure many of you know he's served on many of the board's boards, president of Brownstone Gardens. Mayor Richards, former president of Brownstone Gardens, still on the directors. Jim Roderick, former president of Brownstone Gardens, still on the directors. They've done their service with the town. Ron Starks, a fairly new member of the board of directors. And Alan Van Tassel from the board of directors, another former president. So, the deal is to get to be president and stay on the board. Brownstone Gardens is actually four corporations. In 1975, it was built, Brownstone Gardens 1 was built. In 1985, Brownstone Gardens 2 was built. In 1995, Brownstone Gardens 3 was built. And we recently formed a new 501(c)(3) corporation, just called Brownstone Gardens. Our goals are threefold. Number one, continue affordable housing for the next 35 years. Number two, to make aging in place improvements, capital improvements, that aid our aging in place. If you moved in there 43 years ago at 62, you're now 105, all right? And if you're living on the second floor without an elevator, it's tough, all right? That said, the capital improvements are going to be, not as, are going to be mostly the addition of elevators in the residential buildings, the addition of fire sprinklers to make it safer, and to add more laundromats so the tenants don't have to go outside in clement weather. There are also some ADA improvements, and new roofs and things like that, but it's really, there's no new units or anything like that. We are adding a few parking spaces for two reasons. A, for ADA purposes, we're converting some of the existing spaces to ADA, they're wider, and have, we're adding a few ramps to facilitate the situation. And additionally, we are adding, I think it's 11 total, of which six are really redefined in that regard. Brownstone Gardens in itself does not have a parking problem. We have about 20 vacant spaces all the time. The problem is, some buildings get the short shift because where they're located, one in particular, and as a result, in that location, we've added more ADA spaces and more actual spaces. The object is to make it convenient for our residents, but it's not to make blacktop everywhere. The greenery of Brownstone Gardens is one of its successes, and we want to keep that. So, we've got to pay attention to what our tenants' needs, at the same time, we want to reflect on what we've done for the community for the last 43 years. That said, later on, in addition to the site plan review, we're asking, tonight, also for an approval not required. I love asking for the approval for an approval not required. That has always been near and dear to my heart.
Love giving them.
But, and, in that approval is really, one of the goals is the simplification of the governance. Right now, we have four corporations, they're all 501(c)(3) nonprofits, but that's four tax returns, four form port PCs, four annual reports, and all the bookkeeping between sites has to be, it's a governance nightmare. So, our goal is to go from Brownstone Gardens 1 and 2, and I will show you on this map rather than on the map. The goal here, I'll show you in the papers. All right? Okay. It's simply, the long-term goal is that we would love to, in the future, add one more building, which would be here, and that's outlined here. And that's going to require some wetlands issues. We've already been before, years ago, we were in front of wetlands, and so you can see where the wetlands here. This in itself doesn't impose a problem, but, and that is the long-term goal, that we would like to add somewhere between 12 and 18 units there. The entire 28-acre parcel was originally zoned for 200 units, we're at 172, so we're still within the 200 when we go there. But in the meantime, what we'd like to do is add an elevator and a laundromat in each building. The biggest problem we have is the second floor, lack of elevators, and then also, the laundromat is in the community building, and our tenants really resent February, the second floor, coming out with a load of laundry and stuff. So, that's, these are all aging in place improvements.
So what happens to the laundry building?
We're going to, we have a kitchen, a community kitchen, that can't be made ADA compliant. The laundromat is going to become the management office and the service coordinator's office, and the manager's office is going to become an ADA kitchen. Virtually everything is, if it's, if it's new, it's tied to ADA. That's really what's driving the bus here. That said, Brownstone Gardens 1 Incorporated and Brownstone Gardens 2 Incorporated will sell their parcels to Brownstone Gardens Incorporated, and that line, right there, outlining those parcels, will go away if it's approved, all right?
Endorse.
And so, the goal right now is, at the closing, we go from four corporations to two corporations, and ultimately, our next goal is to combine Phase 3, which is out of here, and the new building, and add them in and go to one single corporation. That's the long-term goal. But, this present goal is site plan approval and A&amp;R approval for the existing 172 units, along with ADA improvements.
That's it? Any questions from the board? I mean, they're doing site plan because they're slightly changing the footprint of the buildings. It's all they're really doing to put the elevators in.
It's about 10 by 10, is the thing.
Do I have any questions from the public or comments? Hearing none, take it back to the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pretty straight, straightforward. Do you have a motion to approve the site plan?
Motion to approve the site plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Point of order, you probably want to make that contingent upon approval of the A&amp;R plan before you approve the site plan?
Not really. The site plan, in fact, can go as-is.
A&amp;R first.
Well, it's site planned, right now, it's a site planned for two parcels, and that was the way it was advertised. So, we can do it, and if we do not endorse the A&amp;R, it's still a good site plan. And, you know, we, there's no issue of protection of abutting properties, there's no changes in convenience and safety of movement, there's adequate means of protecting wetlands, off-street loading and unloading is there, provision of open space, it's not changing protection, there's no agricultural land. Again, this is all, all of these criteria, I believe, are met. So, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we take up the A&amp;R. And the A&amp;R, again, is to combine the two properties. They're essentially both owned by the same board of directors, so it's just a matter of erasing a property line. Any discussion on that? Is this a public hearing?
Seems very straightforward.
Make sure here. No, this is just an A&amp;R. So, do I have a motion to endorse the A&amp;R?
I'll make a motion to endorse.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You're good to go.
Point of order?
Yeah.
They're technically owned by two separate parcels now. I would ask that we delay the signing of this until we actually, at about the time of the closing, is, I think, is the proper...
When is the closing?
As soon as we can get it there.
Well, we, the problem is that with the site plan, what's the, what time do we have, again, Connie?
90 days.
90 days?
You've heard the site plan, so what you would probably want to do is rescind your vote and make it conditional upon their recording of the A&amp;R plan.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that would be, that's fine with us.
So you can certainly vote to approve the site plan, but you need to rescind your vote that you made earlier, and you need to make the approval of the site plan subject to the recording of the A&amp;R plan. You did this the other, a couple weeks ago with the property on Shaker Road, remember? So, it's simple and straightforward. The car property management can go ahead and do their due diligence and record the document, the A&amp;R plan, you can endorse it this evening, you can go ahead and give site plan approval, and you'd be good to go. You don't have to come back.
That does it.
Okay, do I have a motion then to rescind the vote?
I'll make a motion to rescind the vote.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the site plan contingent on the A&amp;R being recorded?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fine. We're legal now.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's get back in order here.
I wish there were all the seasons. Thank you very much.
I'll rush him, let's go. We're going to open the public hearing on the zoning amendment for commercial vehicle definition.
Okay, the Eastlong Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, the school committee conference room at Eastlong Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, Eastlong Metal, Mass. For zoning amendment Z and 2018-05 commercial vehicle definition, for the purpose of this, purpose of amending and clarifying section Roman numero 8 definitions under the town of Eastlong Metal zoning bylaw, the following definition is proposed by the town of Eastlong Metal Planning Board and its planning board and community development director. Would you like me to read the definition?
Please do.
And the definition is, "Commercial vehicle, any vehicle currently registered as such with the state of, the State Department of Motor Vehicles or equivalent out of state or federal agency, and is used primarily in the conduct of business as evidenced by signage or other commercial enhancements to the vehicle as opposed to private, family, or individual use. Where appropriate, the plural shall include singular."
That's... Is that the language we agreed on?
Yeah.
I thought we had something in there about sign, as evidenced by signage.
As evidenced by signage or...
Oh, yeah, okay, I got it, I missed it, I missed it, sorry.
Okay.
It's there, I missed it.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't put you asleep, did I, George?
No, no. I think you did, maybe, but anyway.
Sorry.
Anyway. Okay. So, any comments or questions from the board on this one? Beat this one to death, kind of?
Yeah, this sort of is a standard definition that's used in other locations.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The word currently, what is the purpose of that word? Top sentence, first sentence, first line?
Any vehicle currently registered as such? So, let's...
What in the future if something is registered as such?
Then it would be a commercial vehicle.
Right.
Registered.
The word currently may not be necessary, I think.
No, it is necessary, because you want to make sure that your vehicle is current, because if it's sitting in the driveway and it's abandoned for a certain period of time, then it can still be a commercial vehicle, but it becomes a sign that's just sitting in the driveway.
Okay. I see what you're getting at.
Okay, so, so, any, in fact, I don't mean to be nitpicking this, because we've been through it before already. I missed the last meeting, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
Any vehicle currently registered?
It's not as of, it's just...
Yeah, but it sounds like, even though it doesn't sound like it is, it sounds like it's as of today.
Sounds like you're working around...
It's currently, as of today's date, it is registered. That's what I'm trying to...
But there's a big distinction between as of this date or currently. Currently, as you're reading it, it's currently, rather than as of a date certain.
An attorney is a very good wordsmith, so I would take your definition.
So what is, there's about 730 vehicles currently.
Yeah.
Better registered.
Better registered.
And it's been pointed out to me...
I was going to say valid registry.
I'm going to suggest one change, it's been pointed out to me that we do not register vehicles with the DMV, we register them with the registry of motor vehicles. And so, instead of putting department, we should put registry.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you, if you want to read that in, you're welcome to do it.
Thank you.
Give credit where credit is due. Okay. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll open up to the public. Any comments, suggestions? I'm amazed. Amazed we don't have a full room. Okay. Take it back to the board, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion on the definition with the change to registry? Hearing none, do I have a motion to recommend this zone change to the town council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And on this one, I would suggest, the next one, well, okay, so that one's done. Open the public hearing on the zoning bylaw change relative to signs, and I would ask that the reading of the bylaw change be waived, and that we simply point out that we're removing the requirement that signs be approved by the planning board and delegating that to the building commissioner, and the changes, because of the way the bylaw is written, there's about four pages of them, because planning board is written in almost every paragraph. So, if we just waive that, we do have copies of the changes, if anyone really wants to go through them. So you want to read that?
Yeah. Eastlong Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, school committee conference room, Eastlong Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, Eastlong Metal, Mass. For zoning bylaw change, 5.8 signs, purpose of this bylaw amendment proposed by the town of Eastlong Metal Planning Board and its planning and community director, development director, is to repeal sections of the town of Eastlong Metal zoning bylaws, which was approved by the town meeting October 27, 2014, which stipulate that all signed application permits must go before the planning board for review and approval.
Any questions from the board on this one?
So, George, all the bylaws are going to change then, once this gets changed?
Yeah, all of section 5, which relates to signs, okay? 5.8, I should say, that relates to signs. And I think you've seen the wording on it, it, there's like 10 or 12 places where it mentions planning board.
Yeah.
And we're taking all of those out and delegating it all to the building commissioner, and he's planning and forces it anyway, and without his approval, we, we, once he says it's good, we prove it, so it's rubber stamped. Any, I'll open to the public, any comments or questions about this one? Hearing none, take it back to the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to recommend this zoning bylaw change to the town council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving right along.
That's less reading for the court.
Yeah. We have a special permit for Faux Delicious. Is anyone here from representing them? No? Connie, was anyone coming from Faux Delicious?
He was supposed to come, yes.
Okay.
I sent him email reminder today, also. I, he is a business owner, so he owns a restaurant, and perhaps...
The issue I have with this one is the request for seating. He's asking for 100 seats, and he can't have 100 seats. He only had 52, which is what? Fresh?
Chippewa thing?
No, fresh.
Okay.
The place that was in there.
Greenwich.
Greenwich, okay.
Greenwich.
Had 52. They only have 18 parking spaces, and you need three, one parking space for every three customers.
Right.
That works out to 52. So I, I'd like to postpone this in case they show up, because I think we need to discuss it with them. Okay. Likewise, to the site plan. We did Brownstone Gardens.
Do you want to, why don't you, you opened it, so why don't you...
We didn't, we haven't opened it yet.
You didn't, you didn't open it?
No.
Okay. So, let me just...
We have a waiver.
A waiver out of order.
That's okay, just...
And that's it, right?
And then we have the seven o'clock hearing.
Let's just...
I'll just make a motion to move...
Well, we, we need to do the, well, out of order.
Out of order, yeah.
Yeah, number seven. Connie, we could open it. I just am reluctant to get into special permit details without the applicant.
His seating plan says 52 proposed. I'm not sure where you're getting 100, where are you getting 100, I'm sorry?
It's on the first page, no, it's not the first page, where is it? The special permit, second page.
Of this special...
Under E. Description and reason for request.
I think he's made a mistake, because on his plan, on his proposed floor plan, if you look at the floor plan, he has seating 52 proposed.
Yeah, that's a copy of the, of Greenwich floor plan.
But he's changed, I understand that, but he's used it, and he's changed, if you look in the title box, he has modified it to read Faux Delicious.
Yeah.
So, you can, I know you're waiting on him, or hoping that he will appear, he may not appear, you could certainly set the, you could certainly approve, but only allow for 52 seats.
Yeah. In fact, you know, what I would think that we would do, well, okay, let's open the public hearings when we discuss this, okay? Open the public hearing for case SP 2018-03, Faux Delicious.
Yeah, the town of Eastlong Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, in the school committee conference room at Eastlong Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, Eastlong Metal, Mass. For...
Faux Delicious.
Yeah, here we go. Request by applicant for special permit for a restaurant at 14 Maple Street, Assessor's Parcel 27-155-0 on 0.49 plus or minus acre site, located in the business zoning district. Applicant Howie Lee, 121 Oakwood Avenue, West Hartford, Connecticut.
So, this is going in where Greenwich was, and he's essentially copied the special permit and floor plan for, from Greenwich. I don't see any reason why we couldn't basically issue exactly the same special permit as we do for Greenwich, with 52, two seats, rather than 100, that was written in on the application, because, yeah, his seating plan shows 52, and...
You couldn't get 100 in there if you wanted to.
Yeah, I know.
You'd be stacking chairs.
And we don't, all we did is look at the seating plan. If he decides to rearrange the kitchen or whatever, that's none of our concern. So, we're okay there. So, any questions or comments from the board on this one? I like, I like David's food.
Happy to see it.
Yeah. Any questions or comments from the public on this one? Hearing none, I take it back to the board. Do we want to have a motion to issue a special permit using the same, basically the same verbiage that we used for Greenwich, for Faux Delicious, with the stipulation that 52 seats is all he's going to have?
Isn't, isn't 18 times 3, 54?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so 54, okay.
It's an even number.
54.
So, no greater than 54 seats?
54 seats, thank you.
End of the day.
Lawyers are not accountants, believe me. We really are not.
That's why I tried and did it, said it was an even number.
Okay. I pulled that one from somewhere, but...
Wasn't a prime number.
First of all, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Further discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to issue the special permit using the same verbiage as we did for Greenwich and stipulating that the next one seating is 54?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now we have their site plan.
Read it over again?
Yep. Okay.
East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, in the School Committee Conference Room at East Long Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass. For request by applicant for site plan approval for a restaurant at 14 Maple Street, Assessor's Parcel, 27-155-0, on a 0.49 plus or minus acre site located in Business Zoning District. Applicant, Howie Lee, 121 Oakwood Avenue, West Hartford, Connecticut.
Okay. So this is basically exactly the same site plan as we had for Greenwich.
Yep.
Any comments or questions from the floor on this one? Hearing none, I take it back to the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the site plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the site plan?
What type of food is this?
Vietnamese. No. Banh mi? Yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a site, waiver of site plan.
The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, in the School Committee Conference Room at East Long Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Site plan waiver request, 2018-30, RTL Enterprises, request by applicant for site plan waiver for home office at 362 Parker Street, Assessor's Parcel, 75-11-0, on a 7 plus or minus acre site located in Residential A Zoning District. Applicant is Joseph Belden at 362 Parker Street, East Long Metal, Mass.
And this is for a home office for, actually, a welding business. And he does agricultural welding, I believe. Is that right? So he goes out to farms and welds on people's property. So it's strictly a home office.
Now, the applicant's not here?
Yep.
Okay, great.
This is my first time out with stuff.
You're doing great.
My wife told me not to embarrass myself.
Have a seat, have a seat. Just tell us a little bit what you're planning on doing and, you know...
Well, right now, what I do, my main customer is John Bernio. I hope you guys know.
Yeah.
But I got to be friends with him and as a welder and fabricator, I can fix a lot of stuff. Just started out little, but now it got to the point where some of the other guys have spread the word. I don't actually do anything work there because these guys are always calling me, I gotta go to their place. But it's time, I feel like I need to set up an account, you know, not just cash under the table kind of thing. So I need to be able to get a business certificate so I can start a bank account, but you guys know all this. This was the step they told me I had to take.
So you, this, this is just a home office, you're not doing any fabrication or welding?
No, no. I mean, I have a shop that I do, you'll see if you drive by, a tinkerer. I do blacksmith work, I've been for 10 years volunteering at Storyton Village.
Yeah.
So I, I do stuff for myself. But no, these guys call me up, I gotta go off site and weld.
Point is, we, we're approving a home office, we're not approving a shop, a commercial shop.
I understand that.
You understand it.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And if you have a commercial vehicle, as we just made the definition.
Yeah.
It either has to be garaged or screened somehow.
Okay.
Okay? So park it behind the house or whatever.
I mean, I usually use my personal truck.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but if it's got a sign on it...
Okay, I get what you're saying.
It's commercial.
You don't want to see it from the road.
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool, I get that.
Okay.
I got plenty of rock for you.
Good. Do I have a motion to approve the waiver of the site plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
I'll get you your waivers tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow. But we'll call you when they're ready, okay?
Okay, not a problem. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
An R. We have a sign for, two sign permits.
Okay, you just want to memorize this. So just before we open that, so at the last meeting, we ended up approving signs for ally company?
Yep.
And I asked a question, why were the signs put up before the planning board had been approved?
Yeah.
And thankfully, our chair went back to the building inspector and questioned him to see, because their response was, the building, the building inspector said they didn't need to come to the planning board. When in reality, the building inspector showed an email that he had sent to them and said before he put up signs, you need to come to the planning board. So we were duped, to say the least. So I would hope that that might be remembered by the building inspector moving forward with that specific company. So, but I want to thank George for following through on that.
Yeah, I think we need to be clear that even not having come to the planning board, signs do need to be approved before they go up. And in this case, it went up even before they went to the building inspector. Okay? And hopefully, the building inspector will enforce that in the future with a ticket or some other means to encourage people to follow the rules.
They are, they do fill out a request for zoning determination. All applicants who come to the, to our departments first stop with building inspector.
Right.
And he gives them instruction.
Yeah.
And typically, they will also come across the hall. Sometimes they don't come across the hall, but we again give them the instruction. And we also have written instructions.
Yes.
So some folks, you know, as we, as we all know, some prefer to, what is that, beg for forgiveness?
Yes.
Okay. I've seen a lot of that in my planning career. It's unfortunate that we do have rules that are in place and none of us, I don't think any of us wrote the rule book, but we're all trying to enforce what is our current bylaw. I know that this will continue. I know that people, human nature, they just want to do what they want to do when they want to do it, and they'll give you an excuse under the sun. And it's all a crisis on their part, even though we try to keep transparent and we put information on the website and people call and we give them answers. But I, I cannot tell you how frequently on a daily, how frequently people come to our office and voice their discontent with the rules. So, and next year, I hope to see not as much discontent because they'll be used to being told, no, you really have to do this, we need it. But we're still in a period of transition.
It's hard being the gatekeeper.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Sign permits. We have two of them for, for 60 Shaker Road.
The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, in the School Committee Conference Room at East Long Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass. For sign permit, 2018-28, request by applicant for sign permit approval for an 84 square foot non-illuminated ground sign at East Metal Shops located at 60 Shaker Road, Assessor's Parcel, 27-170-0, in the Business Zoning District. Applicant's agent is Robert Bodis, JLL Realty Developers LLC, 785 Williams Street, Suite 352, Long Metal, Mass.
So, these are the two signs that they're asking for. One is going to be on the wall, the other's going to be the ground sign. I assume that that is replacing the sign that's there. Motion to approve, so moved, to the ground sign. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we have the wall sign.
And the East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing, December 4th, 2018.
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm reading, okay.
This is the sign permit.
Okay. Here at the school, request by applicant for sign permit approval for a 90 square foot non-illuminated wall sign at East Metals Shops located at 60 Shaker Road, Assessor's Parcel, 27-170-0, in the Business Zoning District. Applicant's agent is Robert Bodis, JLL Realty Developers LLC, 785 Williams Street, Suite 352, Long Metal, Mass.
Do I have a motion to approve the sign permit? So moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have 20 minutes yet. Connie, do you have anything to tell us about?
We have no comments from the Conservation Commission for Plans and Middles. I have no updated forms to present to you, but I have found since I stepped into the responsibility of additional rules, that some of our forms are, there are some serious shortcomings on the forms. And hopefully, within the next few months, we'll see forms that have better clarity and consistency. I would also like to see the applicant actually tell us why they meet the criteria for special permit. I have had that on different forms where you list the criteria and the applicant is responsible for stating to the board exactly why. And ditto for site plan. So that you all, when you're reviewing an application, understand that the applicant knows what the criteria are and therefore it makes your job, I think, a little bit, a little bit easier.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so those are additions to the forms that I would like to make.
I would like to ask that as you develop new forms, you make sure that they are full, able to be filled out online?
That's something that the IT department handles for us.
Yeah.
So...
Perfectly, they'd be like a PDF form that somebody could just fill in.
They just, yeah, all forms should be fillable. I agree 100%. There's nothing more frustrating than trying to complete a form and find that you can't fill it.
Or try to read it.
Or try to read it when it's handwritten.
Yes, yes, yes.
And what drop-down selections? Am I going too deep?
Drop-down selections would be great, but it probably is a little bit above what, you know, what our time and talents permit. We know we have commercial vehicle definition and that we can take off as well as the sign permit approval process that we can remove. As Kevin and I go through the current zoning bylaw, there are inconsistencies and we hope to be bringing them to the forefront.
Great.
Okay?
Yep.
And as far as the update to the master plan, I'd like to take it to the next step. Which brings me to our schedule for 2019. And normally, the planning board meets twice a month. As you know, we are significantly shorthanded and breaking down and setting up meetings every other weekend, submitting the legal ads and all the, the fine details, the administrative details that are associated with putting a meeting together are time-consuming. So what I would like the board to consider is when we have our two meetings a month, planning is, you have the current planning piece and you have the advanced or the long-range planning piece. So I would like the board to consider having one meeting a month dedicated toward current planning, your site plan, your special permit, your subdivision that comes before you, your site plan waiver, any other day to, current planning initiatives that, that we see. And that second meeting of the month be more of that long-range planning session where you all can study what is coming before the town, such as the improvements to the master plan, the open space plan that's forthcoming, the improvements to the, the amendments to the zoning regulations. And any other type of long-range vision, we're going to be moving Complete Streets forward. So with the Department of Public Works. So all of those exciting and stimulating planning projects, I think that we'll find that at least for the first six months might make some sense because I really, to prepare the meeting agenda and legal notice and to have people who still continue to come into the office a week late and insist on being placed on the agenda, it makes it very difficult for me to be a responsive planner versus a reactionary planner. And we no longer practice in the planning profession reactionary planning, we practice responsive planning. So next week, next month, rather, no, two weeks from tonight, I should have your schedule. And, you know, again, we'll show the two meetings, but I would like you to sincerely contemplate the positive attributes of arranging your schedule as I've just described. Work-study session for long-range planning, public hearings for site plans, special permit, endorsement of A and R, and all of the other subdivision, subdivision plans, except also our subdivision regulations need to be addressed.
So isn't the town council putting together a, like a long-range planning committee of citizens?
They have, what's going on with the town council is they are dealing with the general bylaw. Okay, so all of the review is being conducted for the general bylaw. And what, the bylaw will be recodified and along with that will be the zoning bylaw that we have become familiar with. But there are still some changes and modifications and improvements that have to be made to the zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw is under your purview as well as under the building commissioner and under my purview. So we need to get that information to them so there's a seamless, seamless transition, if you will, to having a complete codification.
I don't think I either expressed myself correctly or you didn't understand me. So I thought the town council was putting together a committee of citizens that were going to assist them in kind of envisioning what the community should look like 20 years from now and 30 years from now. Do we want more commercial, less commercial, more retail, less retail, more housing, types of housing? And then this planning board would actually respond to their, their plan by developing appropriate planning tools to make that happen.
That's the master plan.
Okay. So that's, what I'm saying is that's really not falling on this committee?
The master plan falls on the planning board.
Then what is this committee that, that the town council is putting together supposed to do?
As I understand it, it's for a recodification of the, the bylaw. So everything will be electronics and when the, when the bylaws, which will also include zoning or updated, will be, it will be an electronic document. We won't be dealing with a paper document that someone has to enter the information and it's going to be, I can't remember the name of the company, I'm so sorry, I just can't remember.
Sounds like a different committee than Russ is talking about.
Completely different. I, I'm kind of, I think what you're talking about really is an administrative task. I guess what I thought the town council was putting together was more of a vision, visionary process for the town.
I understand what you're talking about, but I just can't remember, we, we call it, in some cities it's called municode. So municode would collate all the information and the data and the changes and then it's online.
Connie, you're talking about something completely different. Not talking about the bylaws. We're talking about a visioning group that basically is going to look at what would, will be the master plan. And, and Russ, Russ has heard, where did you hear this?
Who told you this?
I just, I don't know if I read it or if I watched it one night with them or something. I thought that there was some discussion at the town council. Marilyn, you go to every meeting, I mean, have you? If I could trouble, if I could ask her to...
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm listening and, you know, Connie was talking about general bylaws. There is a consultant that's working with a bylaw committee that's, that's made up of counselors.
Larry's on that.
You know, that's, that's dealing with, getting that all in order. That's basically a runoff of what you and I were on with the, with town council. As far as visionary, the only, the only committee that's been reestablished is the town council's planning matters subcommittee. That's all I know about.
Okay.
And that's a subcommittee that responds at the direction of the council for further information when issues come before them that deal with zoning, bylaw changes, whatever. And they're seeking more information before they make an informed decision.
So, so then I guess that brings it back to you, Connie. So are you, is it your impression the town council wants the planning board to create a master plan for their review?
You, that is your responsibility. You...that is your responsibility. The master plan, the creation and the updates and the implementation of the master plan fall under the purview of the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's why we're, you know, we're working to update the master plan and then we make our recommendations to town council. It has to go to vote for adoption, just like you would with any zoning bylaw amendment. But the planning board's responsibility is the master plan.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
The only thing...I think we need to think about your proposal on meeting schedules because the only thing that I'm concerned about is constituent service, okay? That particularly for waivers of site plan, most of which are pretty much rubber stamped, okay? We have people waiting for their business certificates. They can't open their bank account until they get this. Making them wait an extra two weeks could be a hardship. So there are simple things that we can do even when we're doing our more long-range stuff. I think we've got to allow that to happen. But if it's going to be a hearing, you're right. It's going to be a hearing and it's going to take up forty-five minutes to hear everybody, okay? I mean, we never know. Tonight, nobody showed up. Last time we talked about commercial vehicles, the room was full. So we never know how long it's going to go. So you're right. We're going to find time to do the stuff we need to do. We really need to schedule that in. So...but we also need to be sensitive to the fact that waiting for permits costs people money and, you know, there's balance there.
So the building inspector has thirty days to respond to an application.
Yep.
And as far as site plan waivers go, those are easy. There's no legal ad that's necessary. It's added to...it's popped on the agenda, you know? So that's pretty simple and straightforward. It's when you have to provide notice in a newspaper of general circulation and do the letters to the abutters and create the notice that goes up on the PowerPoint notice that goes up on the screen at the library. That is the most time-consuming, tedious little piece of information because you can't...you can't just copy and paste the agenda and pop it into the slide. It's almost each and every line and then you have to decrease the font size or else it rolls off the slide and it disappears. So and, you know, usually with PowerPoint, you can just add in an additional slide and there you go. But it's copy-paste, copy-paste, copy-paste. And I...until I have somebody who can do this quickly and readily without interruption, that's an hour just to do that silly slide.
Yeah.
So and that goes along with the public hearing, you know? So anyway, so those are my things that I have found that had to be done that do take an incredible amount of time that isn't really well spent, isn't efficient.
Yep. Okay. Can I suggest we take a seven-minute recess and come back to the motion to recess for seven minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Get on with our continuation of the public hearing for case ZN 2018...not ZN, I'm sorry. Yeah, ZN, 2018-02, 3:30 Chestnut Street.
Have they read?
It's a continuation. Yeah, it's a read. So does anyone here want to come up and talk to us about this? I will say we have received, all of us, an email from...originated from Jane Madaleski giving some draft dimensions and for the...and uses for the mixed-use bylaw. I don't know if everybody has actually seen this, but this email to us by Connie.
Who are you? I'm Friday in New York, New Jersey, tonight. Everybody stay over.
Tonight, Travis.
Two and a half, three hours.
Three hours.
Happy being Tampa tomorrow.
Are you?
Six hours.
Lovely. Anyway, so what...do you have any...we got the email, which is great. It's a good starting point.
Jane is here tonight.
Good.
Would you like to...
Yeah.
Jane, you're the applicant.
Yeah, you're the brains behind all this.
I did have a couple of questions about the existing projects that you've got in New Jersey. When did they actually get completed and start filling up?
Well, it depends. Cherry Hill started in '04.
Okay.
It's still under construction. We only have about six hundred and some odd units out of sixteen hundred that are built.
Okay.
So it's still, you know, completing. It has lots of million square feet of commercial space. Most of our projects take three to four years to fill. Somerville, you know, it's usually our average, if you will.
I noticed in Somerville as well, there's a completed set of units and then there's a big vacant lot next door with a sign on it that says, "Coming soon."
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the reason I asked that is to get a feel for the timeframe if this goes in here at 3:30 Chestnut, okay? Clearly, it's not going to happen overnight. Will you be doing it in phases that way?
It'll go in phases. You would typically start each type of product. So if you had a mixed-use building with retail restaurants on the ground floor and apartments up above, you'd do one of those. Obviously, if you had a townhouse, you would start those right away. If you had a condo building, you'd build one of those. And then if you had an apartment building, you'd build one or two of those. So that you would get started with each one and then as they fill and sell or rent, you could, you know, move on and build the next one.
So Cherry Hill so far has been twelve years in the making.
Right. With 2008, 2009 in the middle, so...
Yeah, yeah. I understand that.
That was a little different.
A little bit of a pickup there, yeah. Okay, so we're looking...this is not going to be the entire population coming in in one year, obviously not.
No, not in five years.
Yeah. Okay. I think that that's something that is a level of comfort, I think, that would be good, that we're not going to immediately transform by adding a huge amount of population. It's going to be...it happens over time.
Yes.
Just as it does with, like, a major subdivision.
Correct.
You know, Great Woods has been in the works now for, what, twenty years, thirty years?
Yeah, probably.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe longer than that because it was...
Probably ninety-six, ninety-seven. When it was when they started...
Yeah.
With the occupants.
Right.
But this is a different mix.
I know, it's a different mix. I'm just saying, it's...in terms of the hit to population, it's not like the schools are going to get hit overnight or anything else is going to get hit overnight. Traffic will go gradually over time.
Yep.
Okay? So does somebody have...who has my copy? Oh, you have it then.
So can I just...I want to get a couple of things into the...I guess into the record. So Connie shared with us a document that says, "Mixed-use zoning: a planner's guide." So there's a couple of things I'd like to remind all of us as we think about this. It says, "To encourage developers to use the mixed-use option, the bylaw needs to include incentives and provide for community control while avoiding excessively burdensome requirements." So they're talking about some flexibility there. "It's easy for local boards to be carried away by utopian visions of the ideal development, but the bylaw raises too many hurdles that will never be used." So this is coming from Connie's planning resources. So it's balancing incentives and requirements. It's important to remember, "The community retains control through special permit process," which we still need to talk about, "but the special permit ensures high-quality design." And this document that you shared with us goes on to say, "Selecting the areas and boundaries." So it says, "Their study community selected for mixed-use those areas where rundown properties were prime candidates for redevelopment." This is what exactly we're talking about on this.
Exactly.
And it says, "Establishing boundaries for mixed-use districts is very site-specific," which we're talking about a specific site here. "To be successful, a mixed-use district should include a balanced and vibrant mix of compatible uses with first-floor street-front uses, general reserve for retail, restaurant, in some cases, office uses." Uses. That's exactly what we saw two weeks ago as you showed us your other developments. It said, "Traditional bylaws tend to emphasize buffering and protecting one use from others. Successful mixed-use, by contract, encourages length among uses. It encourages people to walk from one use to another, to enjoy and socialize in a attractive outdoor setting. Many design features promote this ambiance." And I have a pretty good memory. Two weeks ago, we saw common areas, the fountains, people congregate, walkways, all things that are being mentioned in this best planning document. Connie must have given him a copy. No, actually, this came from our Director of Planning. So it says, "Mixed-use bylaws should allow housing, including multifamily as well as retail, restaurants, offices, and civic uses. Other uses may include housing for the elderly, personal services shops, which we saw, childcare facilities, recreation, and other municipal uses." And then it goes on to talk about the variety of housing choice, which you mentioned rental, townhouses, condos. So it's kind of creating a little community as one. So many of the things that were being proposed, I found to be best practices. Is that best way to use this document? So I was encouraged that we were heading in the right direction.
Good.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was in the record.
Okay. And thank you for pulling this together. I really appreciate it. It's a good start. One of the things that Connie has suggested, and I think it's a good idea, is to do some form of public outreach in terms of having some kind of either a focus group or an open forum where, other than this hearing, okay, where we reach out to members of the community and stakeholders in the community to get feedback as to how they view this sort of development and what they would like to see in it. And it might be one or two sessions that we would...the planning board would organize, but it wouldn't be necessarily at a planning board meeting. It would be a listening session, okay, where perhaps someone from your organization could do a presentation and we can listen to what people have to say without actually acting anything at that meeting, so we don't have to call it a planning board meeting and won't do any deliberation there. But at least we get some input from the community because what I find is that on anything like this, there are a few outspoken members of the community who may or may not represent the overall feel, but they're the ones you hear because they're out there and they're vocal. I'm not discounting that. I think if someone feels strongly enough to make their points that way, then that's important too. But we need to see what the rest of the town is interested in. And I'm going to ask Connie to kind of set that up, hopefully, before too long. I know we're getting to the holiday season, too long, so that we can move forward on this. I really want to see a path forward to getting a bylaw written that we can put forward to town council and finally come to some agreement as to the parameters within which this would be done, okay? And hopefully, you folks would agree that that's a good idea going forward. Have you done that in other communities?
We have, yes.
We actually did some here on our own. We've gotten some local business people together. We've gotten local realtors together and done presentations and gotten input and seeing, you know, whether they think this is a good idea, what they would like to see at this type of development, what their concerns would be. And so it's been great to hear the community, people in the community and business leaders and residents and realtors and just see what they thought was good and what were also their concerns.
Well, if you've done that, is that something that you can share with us?
Absolutely. I think Connie was at the last one for a period of time and Denise Minara, the town manager, also showed up for a period of time as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we can share.
So George, to tag team on top of that, so after we would have this, call it focus group, what's the chance of, as we start to get into the nitty-gritty of that, we have a joint meeting of the town council and the planning board? So that there is...so I mean, this project has been here, it's been back to the town council, now it's back in front of us. And I think that it would be wise if we could get the two groups together so that we could come to some type of agreement around the zoning process so that when we actually vote on a proposal, there would be a likelihood that it won't get held up one way or the other in front of town council.
I agree with that. I think if we're going to do that, though, we need to have something specific to talk with them about. And I'd like to suggest that, you know, we had a draft bylaw last time around, okay? So there's a framework out there that we can work with. There may be significant changes we want to do to that, but at least there's a framework. And if we put in our significant changes before talking to them, that we've got a document that we can at least talk around and say, "I like this part, I hate this part." Please, Connie?
So if I may, I think what we should do is look at several mixed-use zoning bylaws or ordinances, depending if it's a city or if it's a town, that are currently in place. I've said before that I didn't find that that particular bylaw that was presented to you before was user-friendly. And it needs to be user-friendly. You can't have...you shouldn't be taking out the calculator and trying to figure out how to install it.
Yeah.
It doesn't help. It doesn't help for the review process, it doesn't help for the developer. So it doesn't inspire.
Right.
So I think what I want to do is send the board some representative samples of bylaws and ordinances that are currently in place so that you can kind of get a feel for what's being used out there.
In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Now, Massachusetts isn't the best example to draw from because Massachusetts can be a little bit behind the times, so...
I agree, but we have zoning law.
So does everybody else.
I know, but they're different.
So does everybody else.
They're different.
You know, but you might be able to choose some of the wordsmithing that creates a bylaw that...because frankly, most of us planners, we'd borrow, beg, and steal from one another anyway.
No!
We do. We do. I probably say that.
But what I mean is our state zoning law, okay, the governing statute.
Right.
Is different from New York's or Rhode Island's or anybody else's. And so at least looking at ones from Massachusetts will be consistent with our state law, which is important.
I hear what you're saying. I do hear what you're saying. And absolutely, but I think that too for some...for a different...just to see how it's crafted, if you will, the words that are used in the bylaw or the ordinance from other places.
Yeah.
And maybe I've been doing this for a longer period of time than Massachusetts. So sometimes when it gets to...I think I'm just going to stop right there.
Okay. But if you can do that, that would be extremely helpful to us and get us moving forward, okay? Any other questions at the moment from the board?
No, I will just say that I was telling some people in the audience that I was at Big Y Sunday morning. Six different people came up to me and were expressing a favorable opinion. One thing that a number of people did mention was the amount of units. Some felt that it was too high, but that was the only negative that I'd heard. But I think if you talk about the phasing in and show how it went in other communities, but, you know, that might resolve some of that.
Yeah.
Russ, was it too high because of density or people just didn't want that much growth in town?
I think just the sheer number of six hundred scared people. But if you talk about a phasing in, you know, people understood that you make a development to also make money. make a development to also make money.
Yeah.
So there has to be some, you know, economics there, but I think just how they, maybe how, maybe how it's presented, I think, is something to consider.
So we got, I'm hearing a path forward kind of coming together. We need to do some outreach, we need to collect some bylaws, we need to draft something that we can shoot at and fight over until we come up with something that we can get consensus on. But you know, my experience is that you're better off coming up with something, even if it's not perfect, and then discussing it and shooting at it than sitting around the table and trying to craft it with five people. That doesn't really work.
How do we get from point A to point B? So you have this meeting or you gather comments and so forth, then what happens, then what happens, then what happens?
Well, we, we get the other bylaws, we hold at least one outreach meeting, maybe two. And then what I would suggest is that Connie and I get together and draft something, okay, based on that, with your input, okay? And then we come back to the hearing and discuss it with the public and with the developers at that point and see if we can come up with something. And then when we get to the point where we're happy with it, we hold our joint meeting with town council and move forward that way. Does that make sense?
What do you see as far as timing?
Yeah. Well, I, I, I'm thinking that our meeting on the, our next meeting in December is probably too soon to have anything done, okay? So I would suggest that we continue this to maybe our first meeting in Janu-
I think the second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January, because with the holidays, we're not going to be able to hold outreach and things like that, it's just not going to be.
We can plan it though.
Yeah. Can you have it before our second meeting in January?
Yeah, so why, why don't we keep the 18th, if I may make this change? Why don't we keep the 18th?
Okay.
And we'll report back to the board.
Okay.
On a schedule for outreach.
Okay.
In early, in January, before your second meeting.
Okay.
So when that outreach would be, maybe a day during the week, maybe a day on the weekend, maybe an afternoon session, maybe an evening session, whatever the case may be. And perhaps maybe you could have, we can have some examples for the 18th?
Of December?
Yeah. As a target, as a goal.
One or two.
Okay.
To, just, just start to.
We're going to work on it.
Just to start to fertilize the process.
Okay.
When is our second meeting?
December 18th.
There are, in, in January.
One, two, three, four.
We don't have, I don't have.
There are five towns in Massachusetts that are a part of this planning best practices that use mixed use.
Right, so again, we'll, you know, just to keep it.
If you want to write them down.
So we'll report back, we'll report back on our scheduling for the outreach. Maybe we can have a couple of, you know, have a couple of examples and then we'll go from there to see what we're going to work on in January so that maybe by, you know, your second meeting in January, we're here at a public hearing, maybe chewing on something. And we can decide from there, at that point, maybe we're all ready to have a session with the council. And it's going to take some time during January to get that.
Yeah.
Possibility set up.
Okay. Good, yeah, I think that's great. And what I want to do is, is not take up your time and our time if we're not actually moving forward.
Right, no, we want to be productive, but, but it's.
But I, I'm beginning to see, at least see a path forward. It's a little fuzzy, but I can see where we're going and how we're going to get there. And that's the important thing, okay, is, is that we, we're not just bouncing things around, we're actually making progress. And I think we're getting there.
So after we have a joint meeting with the town council.
Yeah.
And if it is approved.
Well, we wouldn't approve anything there.
No, no, the zoning bylaw.
No, we have, we, we, joint meeting with them would not be for approval, it would be for hashing differences out. And we come back here and we close the hearing and we, we, we come up with something that we think will fly, we close the hearing, we vote on it, we recommend it to the council, okay? And then they have to go through their two meetings to.
So now we're probably into February, March, at least, yeah.
Yeah.
So March probably, because they have to have two meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, so now in March, so let's say it's approved, if it is approved.
Yeah.
It will approve sometime in March.
Or early April, yeah.
And then they come in for site plan approval.
Well, well, no, then we have to, once that, we have the mixed-use bylaw, we then have to actually change the zoning map, okay, because that's a separate step, okay? And then at that point, depending on what we, what the bylaw says, it would be either special permit or site plan approval, okay? But we don't know that yet because we haven't written it, okay? And we haven't discussed it with town council as to what's going to fly, whether it's special permit or whether it's site plan with special permits for parts of it. You know what I mean? It's, we don't know yet what it's going to be, so. But at, at that point, you know, late spring, we could be talking about the specific project. You know, I, I know it sounds like a long time, it's been a long time.
We're not in a rush, that's what we've been saying since the beginning, we'd like to get the process right.
Yeah. And that's what we would like too, is to get the process going and to come up with, come up with the right thing.
Yeah.
So that, as you point out, it's probably a 10-year project or longer till it's completed. Let's make sure it's right at the start so that we're not revisiting things and trying to.
The last time around, I think at the end of the process, the town council was looking for a recommendation from the planning board. And I think that's what they were lacking, you know, last time around, so I think, I hope that this time around, there'll be some recommendation.
We submitted a recommendation. We submitted a recommendation to them.
Yeah.
They didn't like it.
Maybe that's what was.
And, and, no, seriously, they did not like it. And for whatever reason, and you were there, you know, and asked to withdraw without prejudice because you didn't want them saying no.
No, yeah.
Okay, and, and this time around, we want to go with something that they can live with, you know? It's, it's a political process as well, you know that.
Right.
And they are elected, so they have to respond to their constituents a lot more sensitively, and we try to respond to our constituents as well as best we can, but we're a little more isolated from that than, than they are because they're elected. I was elected on this board for many years, so I know what it's like.
Now you can just think about planning, you don't have to worry about your election.
That's right.
I never worried about it, I kept running unopposed though. George, a question about the public informational sessions or public listening sessions. Would you be hosting that?
I think that would be the best way to do it.
Yeah, that's why I agree, that's why I raised the question.
Yeah, because it makes it more impartial, if you will. We're not trying to steer it one way or the other, we're just going to listen to, and it may not, they may not be completely all about this specific project, more about how do you view the town, how would something like this fit in with your view of the town?
What's the impact?
You know, that sort of thing.
So would we be planning as far as space and time or just a presentation?
I think just the presentation. And we can just maybe get some dates together that work collectively for everybody. And then the planning board sets it up and just lets us know when it's going to be doing, when it's going to be happening and where it's going to be happening.
Right.
We can be there to do our presentation.
And we can host, we can do the coffee and donuts.
I mean, I have no problem hosting, but it's really up to the, the town and the planning board as to where they want to have it. I mean, I don't know if there's a possibility of even having it at the library, I know a lot of stuff goes on there.
At the library, maybe at the.
Council on Aging.
Yeah, the Council on Aging.
The COA, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Those are the two best locations, the library and COA. In a lot of ways, the library is better because some people don't like going to the COA because it makes them think they're old. No, I'm serious. This is, this is.
Maybe, maybe the high school, high school auditorium, is, or is that just?
I figured it out.
No.
That, that, anything you do in schools is a little more complicated, okay? Seriously, because of the schools.
Custody and open school.
It's custodian, security, okay, the whole thing. You can't do it during the day, you have to do it at night, you know.
Talk to school officials.
What?
The administration.
Administration, yeah, the whole thing.
So perhaps if the library were, was a site to hold the visioning session, public outreach, we might want to open up the space, the entire space versus trying to cram into that room because I, both rooms run out, they're, they're tight, they're tight, they're not.
You're talking about COA or the library?
Library.
Library, you can't open up it, the library?
No, I'm just trying to think outside of the box.
Isn't there space on the second floor?
Yeah, there is, there's a, yeah.
Like a more open space, yeah.
Yeah. You have to talk to librarians about that.
Yep, I will.
What we could or could not do. But they do have a fairly large community room, it'll hold 50, 60 people.
I mean, they're on a regular basis with other meetings, so I, I'm well aware size. I just would hope to generate a lot of interest from the community. Let me, let me.
I mean, if it can't work at the library, it could always be at the COA.
Yeah, you can do it at the COA, they've, they've got plenty of room there.
We had a selectmen's meeting at the COA of 200 people yelling at him without firing the police chief.
The people concerned about the rage.
So there's plenty of room there.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, between then and now, we're going to continue to reach, reach out to people and try to get as much information as we can.
Yeah.
About the process and about the project.
And Connie, I can help you in gathering the bylaws from other towns, because most of that's online now.
Well, actually, I would invite all of you to, to look around and see what other communities are doing, not just limited to, because I think it would help you to become more familiar with what other towns are doing and cities are doing. So have at it, you know, go, you know.
What would I suggest though, to be.
And then bring them back on the 18th.
To be transparent and not go follow the open meeting law, is if we find bylaws that look interesting, send them to Connie. Do not circulate them, okay? That way she can collect them and send them back out when we're not collaborating on it, okay? That's really important, so you know, okay? Good. Anything else anyone must ask or any additional input?
Do you want to report on our fire department meeting today?
I met with the chief today.
Oh, good.
Just to talk about the project.
Want to fire him into another?
We want to fire him into another, I'm a volunteer fireman.
It's a secret handshake, they didn't let me in.
And talk plain language, like if there's a fire in a building, it's called surround and drown, do not send anybody in.
Yeah.
The building's safe, by the way, but we just, there's nothing to save inside the building. So we talked in general terms, just about what the project is, and he'll be very happy when the building comes down. And so we have no information to share right now, but I told him we'll keep him in the loop.
Okay.
And he will be looking at the plans as we get further down to make sure that turning radiuses, trucks can get there.
Yeah.
Ladders can go up, you know, distance to fire hydrants and things like that, so he'll be part of the process.
He had no comment on, on the maximum height?
We told him it's no higher than what is there today.
Oh, okay, and he said that, that works?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Because they service the buildings today.
Okay.
When do you plan inserting demo? You tell us when we get the zoning. Oh, you're going to wait. I, I didn't realize you were going to wait till it's approved, I would just get it down and get your taxes down and get it cleaned up. Yeah, we're waiting.
Okay. Very good, that, that's important. If you could summarize your discussion with the fire chief and email that to Connie, that would be great, so we have that in the record, okay, as well as verbally. It's going to be a lot of information here and then trying, we're going to have to collate it all, try to keep as much as we can on paper so that we know what was said and what, what the input was, okay? That's great.
Yeah, we offered up, we told them that as we get closer to demolition, we're going to let him know too that if they want to do training exercises in the building and things like that.
Agreed, yeah.
It's always a good opportunity, guys like us, we look for the ability to go into building. I said if you want to set it on fire, he says, no, we can't do that.
Okay, well, if we've pretty much covered what we need to cover, suggest a motion to continue to the 18th? Of public, I'm sorry, open to the public?
Yeah.
Please, please do.
Whoops, good evening, folks, Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. I must be one of those outspoken residents that George was just talking about. I apologize for that.
No, don't.
I'm disappointed though, this room should be full with a project as important as this. That being said, I was prepared tonight to offer some input on some potential issues with a future bylaw, thinking that that was the direction we were going in. And I will refrain from that this evening because there'll be plenty of time for that, especially if you're going to work on some sort of a draft bylaw, which actually makes more sense. But I think it's important to know that the information that Russ was reading through is actually critical to, I think, most of what the support that's out there. As a member of the town council's planning matter subcommittee, we dealt with the previous bylaw and there were some issues and, you know, as you know, the arguments back and forth, oh, it's a town bylaw, no, it's a developer bylaw. And there were issues that were just rough and not quite fine-tuned for what a bylaw should be. Had nothing to do with the mixed-use, commercial versus residential, the types of housing or the offerings that a project of this magnitude could provide for the town of East Long Meadow. And we all agreed it's exciting. In fact, for Marilyn, it started back when Westboro did their mixed-use development years ago. And I visited that project and it's a town like East Long Meadow and I knew that that would be something that would be valuable for our community. The issue is to find the right fit. And that's where the issues came in with the first product and the subcommittee. And quite frankly, most of the discussion, when it got emotional, was about, about special permit. And so, and I still think that special permit is the way to go. It protects the town and also protects the developer. But, you know, I'm not going to take a lot of time tonight, I just want you to know that there is support. I support this project, but I also support this town. And I also feel that the scope of what potentially could happen with this kind of development is key to whether it works or not, and, and that's where I come from. So outspoken or not, I'm not going away. Anyway, thank you very much, you know, we'll see how it goes, but I look forward to seeing what the draft bylaw is when it comes up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else which is to speak of this? Okay, bring it back to the board, we have a motion to continue to the 18th.
So moved.
Have a second. All who's in favor?